Would go with it. You know.
Behave. He got nine o'clock on stand for the pledge. It's just gonna lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For.
Oh, Mark Sarbrook.
Present.
Craig Scott, Jenny David, Brad Newbecker.
Is he coming? Do you hear anything?
Ron Vaughn.
Chris. Uh, any additions or corrections to the agenda? Commissioners?
Oh.
Commissioner Scott?
I think we did that.
Do you have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Uh, no.
I just, I was gonna add economic outlook for the EDC on I. So. A public item to public comment, I'm not gonna read that, I believe, Tim, I got your email that says that it's, it is posted online. So the first public comment is related to agenda items only. Three minutes, please, is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? You know, three appointments, three A, Chris, Casey, custodian maintenance supervisor related to courthouse and grounds procurement card limit. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning.
How are you?
All right, how are you?
I'm glad I seen you out there, remind you of this.
I've been thinking about this, reading it.
Who had questions for Chris? I believe Commissioner Scott, you did.
Uh, what's? What's the need? Uh, we had a sit, well, it's been several situations, but the biggest one was our controller, our power supply for our HVAC controller went out and they don't make the part anymore, but so we had to call Honeywell and they, they had used one that we could buy from them. But since we're not in their system, they had to have a credit card to do the service on it. So Tim had a credit card and I had a thousand, so we gave him the two numbers, but mine already had a balance of like five hundred on it, so that one went, didn't go through. So I mean, that was one issue.
So you're asking for a fifteen hundred hour limit, correct? Is that what it is? Or three?
Like twenty-five, I thought it was.
Twenty-five hundred is what you're asking?
I mean, it's like five buildings that were taken care of, so it doesn't take long over the course of on to incur more than a thousand dollars.
Questions for Chris? Commissioner Vaughn?
It's building maintenance, I mean, it's things that have to be done, drawing, drawing stuff that can't wait.
Right, it's gotta be.
It was a miracle that they had that part coming up to here and that call me the next day, so.
However.
It was like a miracle.
How often would you say as far as a twenty-five hundred dollars, is that monthly, is that rarely, is that?
Oh, it's rarely, but like right now, we wanted to get a baby changing stations, but I already have eight hundred dollars on my credit card and they're under fifty piece, so if we get four of them, you know, I'm having to put that up. Karen was off on vacation that last week, so we couldn't get balance paid out to do it.
Question, Commissioner, Becker, questions?
See, we have an account of five hundred dollars, a lot of money, lot of stuff we do.
Twenty-five hundred dollars on five buildings is a lot of money for maintenance.
For one single purchase, yeah.
But this is, this is a total of, this isn't just for one single, is this for one single purchase or is this for the card balance?
Yeah, it's for the card balance for the month.
That's how I take it as, not.
At the end of the month, if something comes up that's over two hundred dollars half the time, I would have to wait on it.
Correct, so I'm understanding that correctly, it's a total of twenty-five hundred dollars per month, not one single purchase of twenty-five hundred dollars.
But we can spend up to twenty-five hundred with.
Right.
I mean, but I would without asking you, but I mean.
Well, that's, it's gonna kick in some other processes, it's not confused that, but what, what the chair has described is exactly right, it's twenty-five hundred a month, so.
Right.
You get a purchase of fifteen hundred, there may be, you know, a thousand left on it at the end of the month that's paid, so it's back to twenty-five, it's just kind of a like cap.
And that's what policy says is.
Our policy says a thousand dollars and that's just how the bills are paid.
By purchase.
We do it every two weeks, we pay bills.
We do, but the credit credit.
You only get, you only gets billed monthly.
It is.
Just like it's a normal credit card, you get your.
This month.
It's not the last week, so.
And then she was off last, for a little help, she too was off for a couple of weeks, right?
Well, I would think we have a accounts of every, with everybody, well, we don't, Honeywell, we don't have an account with, because they charge dollars an hour.
But they offer them, don't they?
You said, because we weren't in their system. They do offer, I mean, we used to be in thirty-six thousand dollars a year for, uh, maybe, but we take care of it ourselves now, so. Okay. As much as possible, but when we run into a situation like that where like the baby stations, I mean, where do you buy that from?
The what?
The baby stations, where we would buy them from, probably like Uline or something like that, you know, I mean, whichever one's cheapest right now, cheapest I found was a hundred and fifty-eight.
I mean, you can spend two hundred and eighty, I'd be getting from Martha Central for two hundred and eighty.
Does that math just have enough?
The same, this whole thing's just amazing, because we used to have one credit card in, in the county.
Right, and that was.
He finds his office, you know? And then all of a sudden it explodes, everybody's gotta have a credit card, use it all the time.
That would be fine if Karen had one available, I don't care if it's in my name or not, but one should be available for the building to make purchases like that.
I don't have a problem with this, I agree, it's maintenance and those parts are typically quite pricey when you're looking at HVAC or electric or whatever, for a total per month of twenty-five hundred dollars, not per purchase.
No, no. No.
I don't have an issue, I've talked to Chris a couple of times about it and I think Ron has too. And I go back to Craig, before there was any credit card in this county.
Yeah.
You put it in, I, I put more stuff on my personal credit card and then turned it in for purchases.
But I mean, you guys have, you guys are reviewing bills currently, you get to review, have any questions, if you have any concerns. And I know there are some questions as far as trying to stay local, do you try as much as possible to stay local?
I shop at Ace Hardware, Home Depot, Tractor Supply, all that.
It was a question.
As far as janitorial supplies, you know, I deal with the janitorial company, you know, that has all the supplies, you know, has all the expertise.
No, I don't know.
Knows what comes out, well, I mean, it's, it's easier to deal with one company for sure, you know, because we're in their system, you know, and he looks out for us and, you know, like through the COVID or whatever, when there's shortage of paper.
So is that online, you said janitorial?
No, 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 he comes up every, every two weeks, he comes up.
Okay.
So, and I see him every, you know.
A lot of these products, we buy, other departments are buying a lot of these products right here locally. Ken knows you buys a lot of his paper products locally, that, that, you know, and when I brought this up five years ago, the local price was cheaper.
It was, yeah, for cheaper toilet paper, it was, but not for.
No, it wasn't, he sells, he sells the same stuff for the same price, right?
I showed the label to him.
Where do, where do you guys go locally?
It's for our paper products?
Yeah.
Off subject.
No, we're talking like, are you talking toilet?
Toilet paper, just toilet.
That's where he buys it from.
They sell toilet paper?
Yes.
Yeah, they're trying to like get into that, they sell over price bands and cheap toilet paper.
Did you say that aloud?
Yes, I did, it's the truth.
Okay.
Fine.
It is the truth.
I knew they sold pens, I didn't know they sold toilet paper.
Yeah, who knew?
We did.
Who knew?
We did.
Yeah, you knew.
Um, I don't have a problem, any other questions, Tim, do you have input on this?
I definitely understand the need and we, we did scramble.
Oh, yeah.
At one part, I mean, we had.
It was like a miracle that it all came together really, that they could get up here and get it fixed that quickly. You know, most time it'd be like a week, two weeks out to try to get a part like that, that's not even manufactured in.
And again, it's maintenance, it's not a, a office that we're looking at.
Right.
I mean, this is, these are expensive parts.
Oh, yeah, for sure. And service too, you know, I mean, it's like, they charge two hundred bucks, you know, with Honeywell, you know, to service.
Who do you utilize for service?
We try to do most of it ourselves, you know, but sometimes you can't, like, we've had it going before and we were lucky enough to find one on eBay, but that was like, you know, seven or eight years ago, so they've been, you know, it was probably new old stock, somebody had in their cabinet somewhere, you know. So we're.
But I'm talking as far as like service, people coming to.
We were using.
Electrical or?
We were using Brad, but now we've been running into issues with him.
Brad, oh, Mars.
From Northern, you know, so we've been running into issues with them, so now I've contacted a custom engineering, they're from Linwood, but, because we have all them rooftop units at the jail, they're pretty much the closest train.
I use Gills over in, where the heck is he?
You're in Omer.
Omer, I really like them, Danny Hills.
But these guys seem to be pretty good, I like Brad too, but you know, he sold well now to a different companies. Yeah, he kind of got us on the last one.
We just wanna do, try to stay local as much as possible and support our people.
Oh, yeah.
So can we put that out?
Somebody who shows up too, that's a thing.
Agreed.
That's big.
How long you been doing this?
Here?
Yep.
Twelve years, I think.
You staying with us for a while?
Possibly. But you guys got plans.
That should be vicious, Ron.
Time starts.
Longevity depends on.
Can we put that out for a resolution, are you guys okay with that? You. Commissioner DeBecker, are you okay with putting it out for a resolution?
No, no.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, guys.
Tom, you're next.
All right.
Speaking of YouTube views. Um, I put together the report a little bit later than the ninety days that we had talked about, but I'll upload it to your Google Drive. Try to answer the questions the best I can, I'll admit I'm not a YouTube pro, but been looking at the statistics, there's people out there watching. I personally don't think it's a lot, but I can't say, I don't know where these, where these derive from, they're not just Overmau County, so these are, I did look, there was a country in there and it did say they all originated from the United States, so. First column is the number of views, I sorted by the top views, I'm not quite sure what was on the agenda September second, but that happened to be the top viewed video. The next column is the number of hours that the audience spent viewing that particular video. Third column is the impressions, so if you go to YouTube and you type in Overmau County, it might come up with a, a video about the Rifle River, then the second one would be a commissioners meeting, that would count as an impression. So chances are, if you type in Overmau County Commissioners, you're gonna get all of the videos, so that's gonna count as an impression. And the number of people in the last column that actually clicked on a video from an impression is what generated that number, so.
What does that mean, I didn't understand that one.
Which one, impressions?
Yeah.
Click through, impressions are the number of times that a thumbnail came up in a result. So if you went to YouTube and liked an Overmau County and it showed a thumbnail of that video, that's an impression. The second video would be an impression, the third video would be an impression, that's how much your video came up as an impression.
Now, the last one, the click-through rate.
So that's the number of times a user saw that impression and clicked on it.
Okay, but.
Go ahead.
The first two would be more important, views and watch time. We. We had a, we had total views or people that clicked right on the video and watched it.
I couldn't find anything on YouTube that from, directly from them, that's, I wanted to know what constitutes a view. And I found it on a third-party website, was a person that intentionally clicked on the video and watched it for more than thirty seconds. And then I, and then my mind started to wander. If it's a repeat view, and I couldn't get a clear answer on what would generate another view from the same user.
Still and all, this is a lot bigger number than most people think.
Oh, I agree.
Hundred and twenty-one for one particular meeting. Hundred and twenty-one views.
I don't know how many of those are repeats, so too.
Well, even, even if all of them are repeats, that's sixty.
I looked at it though.
You know, when you, you have so many people come in here and say, nobody cares, nobody watches.
I agree.
You know, that screen's full of people watching.
But it's still surprising to me, last night I was at a.
And this is after the fish.
Last night I was at a township meeting and, and I brought this up and nobody seemed to even realize that they can watch this, so I, I still don't think a lot of people are aware of this.
That could be, I mean.
And it was a full, full meeting, so that's why I put it out there and.
I looked at it, there's twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand people in Overmau County, a hundred and twenty-one watched the video, that's less than half.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, absolutely.
That is poor.
I, I, that's why I looked at it.
You can slice it in multiple ways, but I looked at the top video, half a percent of Overmau County watched it, and it doesn't mean that.
Everybody's in Overmau County watching these either, we know that there's out-of-county watching them.
Right.
But that was just what popped into my head.
Again, I don't think.
This would be a view afterwards, this not a view during the.
Correct.
Correct, you can zoom us during the meeting.
Correct. Which I'll say those average fifteen to thirty, depending on what's going on.
And you would never get that, that many in an in-person meeting.
Fifteen right there.
You know.
I agree.
You know, it's a great thing.
Eighteen right now.
Seventeen, whatever it's us.
I mean, all my time here, I don't think I've seen seventeen people sitting in the audience on a regular meeting that had no, no.
No controversy?
No, no topic.
So I guess what's your, as far as data-wise and keeping these videos for a period of time, have you?
Let them go, there's no, we have no cap on how many we can store, so maybe, maybe a year from now, make a retention schedule.
So there is no issue right now with storage or time your, takes for you to do this, or?
Nope, I don't always get them up, I'm, I'm, you know, there's a lot of times I take off after the commissioners meetings, especially when they're in the morning, but I usually get them up the following Monday or whatnot, unless I get an email from somebody that specifically wants it right away, I'll, I'll get on it and get it uploaded, but usually it's the following day, or if it's on a day like today, I'll upload it later before I go. Because it takes a while, like the meeting to process it too, it's not immediately, when we close, it's not done. But no, I don't, I don't have any problem uploading.
So like every, every three months, can you, can you plan on going over this or at least sending this, this slide like this, so we can see it and? Questions for Tom?
I'd say if he can maintain, if he can maintain them for a year, after a year.
Yeah, it's not sucking up storage space on the server.
Just, just dispose of them after a year and call it good.
For a year.
Commissioner Scott?
I'm good with that, then we should make a policy for that, that, so that's that and stolen that.
That's what he was talking about, is retention.
Here on YouTube.
Yeah.
And then we still archive it after that, right?
Um, yes, I have an archive of them, I don't know, I guess that's a retention schedule we'll probably have to do, I don't know how long I'll keep them for, but for the YouTube channel, I don't really see a need to keep them, because they're, like Tim and I were talking, they're not a formal record, the minutes are the record, so.
So you can never revert back to a video?
Oh, right, yeah, but, but the record is, is what's written in the minutes.
Right, but if, if it came down to something, it'd be nice if we had this, or is that not something you could utilize?
Sure, yeah, but yeah, yeah, that's the thought behind, you know, you're gonna do a retention schedule, wanna think about that, just how far back you wanna keep them for that very reason. To reference something.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great reference.
Supposedly could burn a DVD, you know, after, you know, we started taking things down after a year or whatever it is, archive it on a DVD and just store it in a file somewhere, they can be put on an.
Sure would tell you the intent of a motion or idea or something like that, or how we got to that.
Decision.
Yeah.
Sounds a lot.
Yeah, so a year, year would be enough.
Minutes are, are more general.
Oh, yeah.
I believe all I have to have is the motions, I know.
Right, that's all you need.
Yeah. So you're, you're actually getting more than what is required.
Absolutely do.
I'm trying to minimize that.
Yeah, I'm good, I don't have a problem with that. No, we're not, it's not supposed to be in there, right?
Questions?
Yeah, the video would be good, I think we'd extend that, yeah, I'll take. Why don't we talk like with Mac or something, see what other county, about how long they're keeping, because I could see.
I think five years at least.
I could, well, I could see some five-year-old decisions that you might wanna look back and say.
Agreed.
How did we get to that point, how did we? How did that board even?
What was the thought process behind their decision?
Yeah.
Well, there was something that you had brought up, uh, it's not come home, no, a couple of months ago and it was a couple of years back. You had said we should, we should maybe check the minutes to see what was decided on that.
Yeah, we've done that a lot, we've done that with a lot of minutes, we've gone back and checked minutes.
And it's not always there, or it's, it's brief, it, it, enough to where it's there, but.
You're not gonna remember something from.
No.
Five years ago when you weren't even here to watch a video, you get the whole story of it.
I'll remember it, they won't believe it.
That's factual.
I'll know for sure, they won't believe it.
It'll be.
What's the reason for that? Okay.
You don't like it when I'm right.
That's it, yeah.
We'll leave them up.
My idea, I know it's right.
Thanks, Tom, this is appreciated.
Very much.
Mr. Oger, come on up.
Oh, thanks. Morning.
Good morning.
Reason I wanted to talk to you is about, as our cooks leave, replacing them with corrections officers, custody staff. Couple reasons for that, they're trained to deal with inmates on a regular basis, they're trained to self-defense, and they can be utilized in a lot of different areas of jail. Right now, we have civilian cooks, so when they, something happens in the kitchen, they hit a buzzer, we come down, we take care of. I'm getting this the other day, where you hit the dress button, we had to go down and take care of the inmate's fight, which we'd have to do with corrections officers as well, but they'd have the understanding and the education to be able to deal with that in the meantime. The biggest thing is to be able to utilize them in other areas of the jail if we need to. We have one cook that's gonna be resigning December twenty-fifth, I believe, I don't have her.
Their last day.
It'll be their last day, Christmas Day, and as you know, we have another cook out right now. The difference would be the classification.
Now, this wouldn't eliminate the cook position either, so if we had civilian cook apply, we still could hire that person. Track, this is just giving you the flexibility, in this case, and I, Brian and I have talked, we have a unique situation where we have a corrections officer right now who has the skills to take on the cook job as well, which got this conversation going about flexibility. And Brian has shared with me just some ideas on scheduling and rotations and how that would work. But I, I do definitely agree, the idea of having a trained corrections officer in there is definitely a step up in terms of safety of both the staff and customers, the inmates that we have. And, you know, opportunity is there, so its proposal is that we create that dual-type position, not create a separate pay scale for it, just continue the corrections officer pay, but take advantage of what opportunity is in front of us.
So does that make a corrections officer vacancy then?
I would have to refer to Brian, theoretically, yes, because you're gonna have somebody that you're gonna be.
And then down the road, we hire a, then down the road, we hire a, how would you call it, your civilian cook, and then all of a sudden, we got an extra corrections officer?
Because there's two, gonna be two positions, right?
And I can see a little shuffle here.
Because there's a twelve.
You know, all of a sudden, we get two corrections officers working in the kitchen and all of a sudden, then we hire two more to replace them, and then we hire two civilian cooks and, oh, hey.
You wouldn't do that, you'd have the, this would count as one of those cook positions, you wouldn't be having another.
You would have a vacant.
Person in.
You would have a vacant.
We, we have a second one now, and yes, you could end up with a civilian cook, or you could end up with another dual person, again, offering that.
Well, I don't have a problem with a dual, but.
Because there's gonna be two, two open positions, the one that retires, your spouse.
One now, the other one, I'm not aware of yet, I don't, I can't say whether.
That's fair, but the FMLA, or she's off for what, what period of time, is it twelve months?
We. I think it's covered.
Twelve weeks, but then I thought I saw something else just come through.
Um, they can do a.
Extension.
Absence for a period of time by post, but I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I'd say it was ninety days, but even FMLA, there's the opportunity for extension on that, so. Days and weeks in here, I don't know, twelve weeks equals ninety days or all that.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm looking for is to, to try to replace the cooks that leave with the corrections staff, with corrections.
Eventually, that's what you want to be at.
So it wouldn't be the one that's, that's off right now, it'd be the one that leaves her last day, December twenty-fifth. So instead of hiring a civilian, which we could, I could hire a corrections officer for that position and fill that position.
What's the pay difference between the, the starting?
Starting wage, I think a cook starts at thirteen fifty-nine, and the contract that correction's have right now, I think it's fifteen forty-nine.
Well, there's like two dollar difference?
Yeah, not even two, I don't believe. Thirteen sixty-four for the cook's starting wage and fifteen forty-nine for the.
If we ever get a contract.
Well, this is under the old contract, I don't know what you're, I don't know what your new one says, I haven't seen it, so.
Is, is that with the new one, is there quite a substantial difference there than fifteen sixty-four, forty-nine, there is, isn't there? I'm just trying to look at the, the difference.
Yeah, and I don't know what, I, I had to go off what I had.
Yeah, that's fair.
I don't know what the new, the new proposal is actually for your, I believe everybody was going up, I don't know what, what extent.
If two, if that's approved, I don't know. Oh, two things I can kinda enlighten you on, I think is. One, we, we did the study, we have to hire more, we're supposed to have more staff.
Yep, we did that last year.
So, you know, to, to put the extra corrections officers, it's definitely gonna help us, the second thing, I know, as you well know, my wife is a cook over there and she is retiring, to put a male cook in there, corrections officer, you have a better selection of pulling from the back, because they use a couple inmates to help them, right now.
Male, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right now, my wife has two female inmates that come up and help her during the day. They've only got a selection of what, ten females in there?
Does a female have to have two females, a female can't have a.
Well, there was issues.
Right, we, we used to do it that way, but we switched it around so that, yeah, safety's one thing and then allegations can be another thing.
Right, right, right.
So if you have a male cook in there.
He gives sixty inmates.
Then you get sixty inmates to choose, who's gonna go up there and help, and you have a better selection, and it just makes more sense.
Do other surrounding jails, prisons do this?
Prisons do have corrections cook, the, the officer that works for me was corrections officer for MBOC at the Stanish Maxim facility for twenty-six years. He would be the one that I first choose to go into that kitchen, because he has the experience, and, yeah, so prisons do it. For a while, they didn't, because they switched from having their own staff, I think it was, now they're going back to, to maintaining their own kitchens.
So didn't we look at contracting the kitchen, uh, for some reason, I remember some talk on that, bringing in a.
Not since I've been here, but you probably did, that was.
When I first started.
Over periodically.
Over the years, historically, the county has looked at.
Agency, right?
Outside, air market, there's another one, can't think of the other one.
The last time I looked at it, a county north of here was paying two dollars and forty cents a meal, or two dollars and fifty cents a meal, and we were coming in at about twenty-five, about thirty-some months, about forty-some months, we were coming in under what they were paying.
So how many hours, I'm, I'm sorry, how many hours does a, a cook work in a day's time?
Well, they're working ten right now, they work ten-hour days. If we did it this way, I would switch the rotation to twelve, they'd be on two twelves, off two twelve, so next cook would be on three, the same as the officers, A and B rotation.
And the officers do twelve-hour shifts?
They do. It would increase the hours worked in the kitchen, and not necessarily in the kitchen, they could be utilized outside of the kitchen, that's what makes up ten hours, because right now, I think we pay seventy hours a week for cooks.
So when you do that, that staffing analysis, or when the state came in and did that, so would this individual be then, since they're a corrections officer, would they be counted, even though they were working in the kitchen, would they be counted as a corrections officer for staffing purposes? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because the kitchen was not helped counted.
No, this kitchen wasn't custody, I, I don't know if they would count the staffing analysis, they would probably count as, like the state's analysis says, you have to have four officers working, if one goes home, you have to fill that position.
Would that?
Probably cover us from having to fill that position with overtime. I'm not sure how it would work for the staffing analysis as far as working in the back, because they wouldn't be in the back all the time, they'd be back there when we needed them.
So that was my question, is if this would help correct that staffing analysis issue?
It would, it would help correct it for the overtime purposes, for sure. The overtime. Well, staffing analysis, the state, the state committed when they did that and they said, okay, you have to have this many officers and you have to have on shift of each position during this period of time. Um, if we dropped under that, technically, we're supposed to fill that position. We're supposed to call somebody in to fill that position. Having that correction officer, kitchen would have that officer there. We wouldn't drop, we wouldn't drop below that, that number. So we've utilized down from there to the floor.
How much overtime are we incurring now?
Well, right now, it's, it's up because we had, um, well, three different issues, I guess. We, we've got an officer that was off medical, for medical purposes. We have an officer's on quarantine. And then, um, we have the, obviously the cooking, cook issue right now that's going on. So right now, though, overtime is just high.
Who's filling that position right now?
Well, I've been filling it some, working in the kitchen. Um, a couple of the officers, the one officer with the experience in the kitchen has been filling in the kitchen. Um, and then officers, as far as the officer who was off, um, they've been filling shifts of overtime.
So how are we doing?
I've seen some.
Overtime versus the budget. Cause we're only in the second month of fiscal year.
Yeah, it was perfect storm. We had three different, three different incidents. That's great. And the overtime that, um, I, I actually came back a month early. But we had three different incidents and I can't get into details, but obviously they're great. You know, overtime, they're unavoidable.
We got some paperwork that came through. You've hired some. Seen one, uh, this week, seen a couple of transport officers. I think last week I seen two corrections officers.
Yep, and they're training right now. They are in training right now, but they can't be turned loose yet. They're not ready to be.
Right, but it's just nice to see that they're.
Absolutely. And they're very, very good, qualified people. I think they'll do well there. They're big too, which makes it nice. Big deterrent. Yeah, I, I look at the one like this. So that's a big deterrent when you.
The one that I know that I thought was big and I understand that the other one's even bigger.
About twice. And he ain't fat neither. He's a big boy. He's a big boy. So, yeah, we're, we're getting some very good staff and that's kinda unique. Cause, um, a lot of the counties around, you, you'll look out, they're having trouble finding staff. Uh, and we're doing fairly well with that right now.
How many open positions do you currently have for corrections? Not with kitchen?
None until October or until November twenty first. November twenty first is Scott Thomas's last day. He took a job in Lansing. That position will open up then.
So right now, every position is filled in corrections?
Correct. Um, I do have one officer that locked because of the, the insurance issue, um, to get a job where you had insurance. And he knows that you guys have worked on that and whenever that is called, he would like to come back. So I'd be able to plug him right in. He's trained, he's certified. It would, it would be the best case scenario for us.
These officers that you have hired, they have to pass a test, right? If they don't pass it, then they.
They pass the initial test. There's a written and a physical before I can even.
Right, right. Isn't there N M calls or some, or?
They have to go to an academy. They work under us for a year, up to a year, and then they have to go to an academy. So we know in that year whether we wanna put money into sending to academy or they decide during that time, they don't like the job, they're not gonna do it. We don't waste that money upfront. It's different than law enforcement. Whereas law enforcement, you have to have that academy before you can work. This is different. They allow us to train them and then we send them to the academy if they fit what we want. And we fit with what they see as a job for them. So it's, it's beneficial for corrections that way.
But then they have to pass, correct? If they don't, then they're released?
Correct. But they'd go through a hundred and sixty hour academy and I have not seen one that we've sent block it. I mean, it's there, we haven't lost anybody that's gone through the academy for corrections. If I send them there, they're, they're pretty good for the job. They do what they're doing.
Oh, I thought that there was one that's taken some, I'll, I'll get with you later. I, I thought there was one that had taken that test a couple of times and hadn't passed and.
That's the pre-employment test. I know what you're talking.
I'll ask you. Cause I, I was told something and I don't know if it's factual or not, but.
The pre-employment, the, the written test is, I, I swear, ninety percent math.
They have a, a pre-employment test that i- it's a written test you have to take and you have to score a certain percentage or you did have to. It's no longer in place. Um, you had all the, the majority of the counties in the state of Michigan were having issues with that, cause it was, the last fifteen solid questions are kinda subjective. Your answer might be different than mine. Neither one of them really wrong. But they're based in whether it's right or wrong and who wrote the test. So you'd have a lot of the counties complaining about that. So they changed that standard. That standard's no longer in place.
So what's your guys' thoughts on this corrections officer, says cook position? Thoughts, comments?
That's a win-win. I.
I guess my only concern is, uh, we get to a point where some of them are cooking and doing corrections and the others aren't. And they feel like they're doing more for the same money.
Their classification's gonna be the same and they're gonna have to understand that going in. We're not gonna, we're not gonna change classifications. They're gonna do it because they wanna do that part of the job. I'm not gonna. Uh, ba- basically, and this is a misconception in my mind, when, when you're an officer and you work for a facility.
You don't get to pick and choose what you do or don't do.
There's certain job descriptions, but then there's certain wording that falls under, as long as it's reasonable and you're ordered to do it, you need to do it. You can grieve it later if you want. But I'm not gonna send somebody in to cook that isn't, isn't, doesn't wanna be in there to do it. The people that are going there, the people who actually wanna do it. Can I fill in behind them if they go on vacation with somebody to, to do that? Absolutely. But what I'll do is I'll have those cooks that are in there, they're prep everything. So everything's ready for them when they do do it. You're gonna have two people that are corrections that'll be in there the most of the time. It's not gonna be an alternator rotating schedule for, for in the kitchen, cause that's kind of a, it's kinda gonna be specialized to a point. Um, but it will be able to be filled with corrections officer to cover. So.
Will you, will you get to a point where maybe two or three of them decide they don't wanna cook anymore?
Reasonable job assignment.
I guess I set the assignments.
That, that's the purpose of creating, if you will, the correction officer cook position, because if that's your classification, then you know this is part of your responsibility. And the counter argument to, you know, I'm doing more. Well, okay, but the cook position, we will have that when we eventually get our contract pays less. So if you would rather be a cook, okay, we can accommodate that and take the correction officer title away. It's actually advantageous to have it. And described this way, so you're already getting the additional compensation in case we need it. It's, it's in our back pocket.
And we're kind of paramilitary. There's certain assignments that are set, but in, in, in I seven, they rotate from different positions in that jail. They don't get to pick and choose. I mean, if they're not feeling good one day and so they're having trouble, for obviously, we're gonna let them work to where they go up to the, to the top or so they have less contact that day or that. But they, they don't pick and choose. They get assignments.
So will there be a different job description for this officer so that that way we don't run into grievances and?
Yes, so what we'll do is combine the two job descriptions into one. So it'll be a little bit thicker. You'll have all of the same duties and responsibilities uh, that the individual physicians would have. Same is true though in corrections, as is with the majority of the county. We don't have job descriptions at the moment. So we'll create this.
Before this person.
Yes, before we actually put somebody in it. Uh, and frankly, I could have that done before Thursday or this is Tuesday. Careful what I promise here.
Yeah.
Well, we don't need it until.
No, you're running out of time.
Yeah.
Cause there's some training involved.
Yeah, yeah, there'll be some training.
Next to me, the whole, we'll have it out for you to look at.
Questions?
Any more questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item four, Mike, or Dee, excuse me, Michael Benefield? Benefield? Come on up, sir. Network support sales on thirty three access broadband needs.
Lots of fun stuff.
Shorter report.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
I think it's, I think he's just got a short report today.
Biggest thing is honestly, having a discussion with you guys. I've talked with Tim, I've talked with a lot of different folks. Um, tried to get around as many townships as I can. It's really hard being one person and go to different township meetings when I'm covering like three counties now. So. Um, biggest thing that I'm running across in, in our county here is the amount of people that are outside of the, the so-called hubs. So you have around the lakes in town, you have, you know, beachy hubs where there's. And in our county here, you're looking at roughly about thirty percent of our county is in those, in those hubs. Everybody else is outside of those hubs. And those are the ones that are calling my office, pinning their location, saying we need more internet, you know, I'm trying to work from home or I'm trying to, I got kids, like I have kids. And it was, it was a really tough transition trying to get, you know, services to my house even. And so there's a lot of things that are being requested from, from the public that I didn't realize it was that much of a demand. I knew there was some needs out there, I really did, but I didn't know there was that much of a desire for, for more speed, more internet services. The last year completely transitioned everything. Like it was ridiculous. Like it was this major onslaught of we have to have it. How do we get it? What do we do? And so I, that's why the past year, I've spent a lot of time going to township meetings and talking to people and trying to figure out how do we do this stuff. Most of the time it was, okay, I would go to the public. Um, there, there's a, there's a chunk over here on, uh, Gallagher Morrison, uh, on the other side of thirty three. Um, everybody down that road. They all basically came in and said, we want internet. What do we gotta do to get it? We said, okay. Here's the material list. This is what we have to pay for. You guys can help pay for the materials and the permits, we'll bring it down there. And so we ended up cutting them a, a, okay, they have no bill for the next three years because they put two thousand some dollars upfront. That basically paid their bill for the next three years is what it did, but we just applied it all towards material and permits. That's what we've been doing is working with the public to try to get the broadband to them. And this is fiber optic services. This isn't coax or DSL, fiber optic to the hole. So having these kind of services is a major need now. Like everybody's just like, we have to have it. There's chunks of the county that are just. It hurts me to like drive through these areas because I have friends now that are like calling me, hey, what, what else can we do? How can we work this out? Ashley Nelson is a person I deal with on a normal basis. She's got a wireless service, but she's been working from home nonstop now. And it's been really hard for her. That whole chunk over there, there's people all the way down, all the way over to the airport. No, like, this is not right. Like there's all these areas that are just, just like that, where there's people constantly saying, what do, what else do we need to do? What kind of money do we gotta put together? So when all the funding stuff started rolling around, I was like, okay, I will do my best to talk to people to see what we can do to service these areas. These are, these are considered underserved or unserved areas according to the FCC. And so those are the areas I'm trying to target. I'm not trying to, to focus on, you know, West Branch itself. There is, you know, industrial park definitely needs services cause I, I know some of the businesses there. But there's outlined areas that all of a sudden are now, now considered workplaces.
So have you guys formulated a, a plan? I mean, I'm right on M fifty five and I don't have high speed.
Right.
Um, I've had you guys come out and look within the last year and there was nothing you could do. Um, which is extremely frustrating, but what is, what, what plan have you guys formulated that, where you could provide?
Biggest thing is, is getting the mainline construction in. So, uh, for instance, we worked with Big Creek and got that contract already done and finalized. We're putting fiber optic mainline construction from Mayo to Luzern. Because that whole chunk there, there's nothing there, no services available other than basic DSL, which is like, uh, I think the most folks got out there was ten meg. If they were close enough. Um, so that's what we're doing. We're, we're putting the mainline in. And then off of the mainline, M thirty three access is filling in these little voids and filling in the, the little tiny chunks, I guess you could call it, so we can service the people. So the biggest thing as what we're doing is trying to coordinate where's the mainline construction need to go in the, in the areas. And then coordinating with the, the county and the townships together um, to figure out, okay, where are your areas that you deem important and necessary to get services to? And then we've, we figure out and plan together, okay, this is the path we need to take to get to these areas to service those locations. That's what I've been working.
So are you requesting townships come to you guys with ideas?
Well, it's a combination. I've been going to townships as long as they show any type of interest. I actually set them up an account on a mapping system that I run. And I give them account. I said, I put their stuff in there and they tell me where they wanna go. And then I draw the lines on the map for them. They talk to me about areas. I show them all the data I have. If, if people from their township have called us, I show them those areas where people have called. And I, I kinda break it down for them and then show, you know, work together with them. So that way we can, okay, these are the areas you guys are concerned about. And I take that information, I share it with you guys and we, we just coordinate. And that's my biggest thing is I want, want coordination because I, I don't wanna just blindly just throw lines in the ground willy-nilly. I wanna make sure it's done right. And because in the long run, I want my kids and my friends and my kids to stay in this region. And I need to make sure that this region is taken care of for the future. I'm not trying to do something that's just gonna put a Band-Aid on things. I wanna make sure this is done and done right. There, there's, again, there's so many people up here that can utilize these services that this is my, my, I guess you could say my desire to get this done. No matter what we gotta do, even if it's like, like teaming up with another ISP to figure out their section, like we've, we've even talked to another local ISP in the area that they have fiber optic services. We're talking about joining up with some of those things and saying, okay, well, that's two ISPs in the area coordinating efforts to get things done properly and done right. Again, it's just a major plan right now to figure out what we can do, figure out the money side. I'm, I'm not trying to make money on the bill. To me, that's stupid. Like.
Don't say you're not trying to make.
They don't have to do money.
No, no, here's, here's my thing. I did it with Big Creek. We, we basically set up everything at cost. That's the C required. The federal government requires us to pay our guys extra wages, which I'm like, okay, that's like saying, here's a bunch of money, now cut it in half. Okay, so my guys are gonna make money out. The company itself isn't making any money on it until we hook people up and actually get them services. So the build, personally, the build should not create money for the company. The build should just get the stuff there. If the company's gonna make money off of it, it needs to be the company doing the work to get the customers hooked up to make sure they have services. So then they can create money out of it.
Build it, they will come.
Correct, right. And that's exactly.
You're gonna make money. Come on.
Yes.
And the day's done, you gotta make money.
But I'm not gonna make it. I'm not gonna make it on the bill. Well, I, I know other counties.
You brought up this small neighborhood.
Yes.
Okay, how mu- how much of a small neighborhood did you supply and how much did it cost?
That one there cost us, uh.
Cost the consumer.
The consumer?
Yeah.
That cost the consumer. So the consumer doesn't have a bill for the next thirty six months.
How much did it cost?
It was like twenty some thousand dollars in materials.
Between how many people? How many households?
There was literally, that's how much money we brought in. So it was, I, I don't, I don't know the number off the top of my head. I can.
Well, I've been, I've been to four township meetings and you've been to it at the same time. And you've, and, and you're talking to townships with thirty six square miles in them. And you're offering them at best eight Leonard, eight miles of road to get down. And if, if you just took one section out of thirty six, that'd only be the, that'd only be the perimeter of one section. Four miles is a perimeter of one section.
Well, first of all, you gotta look at the construction costs. We need to look at how much it costs to put it in there. In order for me to plow it, it's cheaper to plow than it is to bore. So, and again, that's where I gotta pay my, pay the guys different wages.
And when you come to the creek, it's harder. And when you come to the pipeline, it's harder.
So the, the construction cost is what I'm talking about paying for. So construction of the, now making money off the construction.
I get it.
We're not gonna make money off the construction. The company does not make money off the construction. That's what I'm talking.
What does Mills have? They have high speed.
Yeah, and I think there's, there's charter spread out in a bunch of different areas. That's why I said there's little pocket areas where charter's at. And it's, it's funny, but that, to put stuff, services in for charter, to put services in.
Yep.
You're talking ten to twenty thousand. I've heard one person tell me it was like thirty to forty thousand for one mile. Okay. Um, for me to do, it was a equivalent of twelve miles essentially from Mayo to Luzern. We have to go under a river. We were, we ended up having to, it was like ninety thousand dollars what we, what we wrote it out as. That's because I had to pay my guys extra wages because of the federal mandate. You have to do Davis Bacon. Um, so we had to calculate their wages and everything into that, of how long it's gonna take them to get from. Um, so we had to calculate their wages and everything into that, of how long it's going to take them to get from point A to point B. Okay. That's a lot of miles for that price. If you do the numbers.
How many miles did you say?
It's roughly twelve miles.
For how much money?
Ninety thousand dollars. We gotta go under a river.
What do we got?
Well, what about, what about if we take twelve miles without a river?
Well, again, if you plow it, it's different price because my, I don't have to pay the guy an extra wage because he's running a board mission. So it
So that wasn't a fair, that wasn't a fair cost in comparison.
So, so if you're, if you're doing the numbers, if you run it on average, um so if you're looking on average, you figure out per mile, I think I was doing, it was like not, it was under two dollars uh of a foot. But which was, which you break that down was, yeah, if you do the cost
Ten thousand dollars a mile.
Right. I said it was, yeah, so it's under, it's under two, it's under two dollars a foot. You asked Charter to do that.
Well, I'm not asking, we're asking
Like I said.
We're not asking Charter. Charter is not sitting here.
No, that's my point.
Okay.
You said they, they were roughly nine thousand though, is what you said.
Yeah.
And you're roughly ten thousand per mile?
Again, it just varies on
I understand, so. We need to compare apples to apples, but so is there any other could we get? Because that is what all my, I, I don't think I've seen it in my townships yet.
No, I haven't been able to make over there. Everybody's township is all on the same night.
Yeah, I know. It's always the first week of the month. I understand. But I mean, are there other people we could get bids from? I mean, obviously you're local and we appreciate that. But I, I don't know anything about this.
No, no, I'm saying you, you could ask Charter. Um, you can ask, uh what's the
That is what we're hearing a lot of, at least I am in my township. So we have numerous little lakes and these people are, are up here now looking to stay up here and that is obviously their biggest complaint. They're just working from home and it's, it's, it's internet. So that is what they're talking about using these funds for.
And again, the reason why I'm trying to give people maps, I'm giving them maps, we're drawing lines and we're going out and I'm driving the road and figuring out what we have to do. Is it a bore? Is it a I have to calculate all that up and then put it into the, the federal system and figure out how much to pay a guy that holds a shovel and
Right. What time, what timeframe like, um, are you looking at? So
Well, right now, right now I'm booked into the first part of next uh spring. Like I've got, I'm already, and again, this is I'm trying to get things established now before the chaos ensues. Cause I've got Mount Rancy that's talking to me. And I've got um, Escoda, obviously there, Escoda County is now trying to uh establish legally how to, if the, if the township does so let's say that builds a hundred thousand dollars, the township gives fifty thousand, the county gives fifty thousand. And they're all putting it under the county's lawyer. So that way the township is going to have to figure out how to do the legal stuff. It's all under their lawyer. And so that way it's all you know, under one tree. So it's easier to document and everything else too. Um, but that's, they're trying to team up to get broadband pushed in. So that's what we're working on in Escoda. Um, again, that also helps the townships to utilize their funds a little farther, make it push a little farther than if they can. So the biggest thing is teaming up together to figure it out. I'm not saying utilize us. My biggest push is let's do the numbers, let's draw the lines, let's figure out the, the first part of it. Cause that's, that's the biggest start is one, where can you go with the funding? If you want to utilize the funding, what can, you know, what's the areas you can put it in? It has to be an underserved or unserved area. You can go through another area that has service, but you have to end, the endpoint has to be where it's underserved or unserved. So again, we can figure these things out, but you have to make sure what you're doing and where you're going. Cause this is all going to be out of it. You gotta make sure you cross your Ts and dot your Is. Um, so I'm trying my best to make sure that we all do that. So I don't want any township to have to pay back anything. And I want to make sure it's all done properly. And I, I know that the cost is where it should be because I'm, I'm the one doing the analysis. I'm the one going out there figuring out the cost breakdown. And going through the materials. Materials are getting harder to get to because that's another thing. Um, it's, it's definitely a, a push to figure out where we're going, what we're doing, get the plans together. Um, any township that has any interest in that stuff, I'm trying to get ahold of them. If they can get ahold of me, that's great. I can set them up with an account. Set the map up for them, get it figured out and then plan to come to their meeting and, and sit in and stuff like that. I I'm just jumping all over the place right now. I've even been doing weekends. It's crazy. There's townships that have meetings on Saturdays.
Thank you. Any questions, Mark?
Big project.
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking at the road commissioner site right now. There's a thousand forty-four miles of, of road that the road commissioner is responsible for. That's not total roads.
Right.
Okay, that's just their responsibility. All private drives and stuff like that are added on. I mean, ten thousand dollars a mile. I don't think my calculator is going to add the going to provide the number at the end there.
So if you spend this ten thousand dollars per mile, as things change and develop and they're going to different uh materials and I don't understand all that fiber optic stuff. I, I mean, how long before you see that they have to go and update all of this stuff to the new
Fiber is the new.
Oh, it is. Cause all my townships were discussing that.
Yeah, their fiber is
Fiber is the latest and greatest and it's going to be the gold, it's the gold standard.
Everything's gold standard initially.
I get what you're saying. It's just like the satellite dish. I mean, my gosh, I mean, the eight foot satellite dish, the last antenna you'll ever have to buy.
Right.
The next thing you know, they came out, the one that was twelve inches. Oh, the last thing you ever had to buy. I think, I think my dad bought rabbit ears with the tinfoil on them and that was in nineteen sixty-two and that was the last TV antenna he had to buy.
But I mean, that's my question is how long do you foresee this if, if all this money is invested?
Hundred years.
That's considered outdated and slow or dial up or whatever.
Yeah, you won't
They're solved by them.
I mean, I, I don't see what would come next because we're using light as our speed source. So what's faster than light?
Hundred years from now, you'll be
Oh, I don't know.
Right.
George Jackson.
So with that, I mean, the good thing, the good thing is with fiber optic, it's, it's all about what you put on this end and this end. So if there's an update or if there's something that gets
You can update it.
You can update this stuff. Stuff in the ground is done. You don't, there's, and it doesn't get messed with, with weather and you know, snow and, and water does short it out or, you know.
But again, you're talking, you're talking, you're talking main lines, correct?
Well, it's also into the house. The way, way we service everything, there's fiber optic line going all the way into the house or
Yeah, but I, I, but I'm talking about these lines you're talking at ten thousand a mile. This is main line.
Main line.
Then you guys come in and run to the individuals.
Because I, legally, we can't run it to the individuals by utilizing the funds anyway. Um, you can give vouchers out, but you can't legally run it to the homes. So you can put, it is designed for the mainline construction only. And then the person has the option to tie into that line. They can call in and say, hey, I would like to have services. That's what you're doing to, to the areas and not running it to the home.
How far? How far can you run?
I can run fiber optic
The little, the little lines.
It doesn't matter. It's the same line that's in the mainline. It's a glass line. I actually was going to bring stuff in. I haven't um, it's the same, same glass line that runs down the mainline. It's the same glass line that runs to their house. Um, it's literally the same stuff. So there is no change. There's no, there's like DSL right now, it runs down the road. Some of them have fiber running down the road, which is hilarious. And they go to a box. Out of that box, they run uh DSL, which is essentially copper lines to the houses. Now, if you're more than three hundred feet away from that main box, your speeds all of a sudden drop. So if you're paying for twenty-five meg here, you have it right here, but as soon as it gets to your house, it's one. Um, and so that's the biggest concern with DSL is that there was major like drops. So they have fiber optic going to their hubs and the roads, but it doesn't do any good because it's all copper everywhere else. And that's not going to change. Um, coax, coax has a good uh run because they can get, they can get stuff that's done to uh like up to five hundred down, five hundred up typically on a coax line. If it's the newer coax, uh, a lot of your older plants can't do that. Um, they're pretty, pretty limited, like the one up in Mayo's, they're completely, I think it's sixty meg maybe. Um, again, there's, there's a lot of differences. With those, those two still have an impact from weather, corrosion, all that stuff, whereas the fiber optic stuff does not.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Or we got discussion items, corrections facility bond refunding.
Bunch of the material that you've got in there, just I'll run through the, the highlights of it. Uh, but this um does, it's, I guess can be described like, uh, if you went through the process of refinancing your house. So we have roughly seventeen years left on this bond. What we would do is refinance at a lower interest rate and save savings. Our total gross debts uh service savings based on the proposal that you have in the material would be uh just under three hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars in total. That works out to roughly twenty-two thousand dollars a year uh in savings on just the bond payment itself. There are expenses, this isn't free, so there are expenses that go along with this. This would include the required bond advisor and bond counsel. Uh, the bond advisor with the material that you see is the same uh group that does the financing for us right now. Uh, we did look at a couple of other uh options and this uh with their costs were actually uh uh better than what anybody else had. I wouldn't necessarily suggest changing at this point anyway. Keeping the financing with the people who already know it, uh, I think this is going to be much more efficient. Bond council, we have to have uh total expenses just under a hundred thousand dollars to do this. The nice thing is though, that cost gets rolled into the bond itself. This isn't a check that we have to write out of the general fund. It's actually incorporated then into the refinancing effort. The timetable for doing this, if the board is interested, uh, is in document four A four. Uh, we start out with a resolution next uh Tuesday that would uh allow us, uh, would allow the bonding uh advisor to proceed with the project. Some of the big highlights uh on or about January eighteenth, we would do what's called a reading call, the standard impores. And that's literally a meeting that runs, uh, can run anywhere from a half hour to an hour. That would include likely myself, the treasurer, probably the clerk, maybe a county attorney. Uh, but this is where we answer a number of questions about the county, go through the audit and go through the policies and procedures that we have in place. When internal controls do we have? All this adds up to a grade or rating that we end up receiving. Our current rating is a double A minus for uh Ogumaw County. That's an okay rating. Uh, do we have a prayer of going up? Probably not, just simply because of the way the economy is today. Uh, as our, uh, in our meeting with the uh bond advisor that we have currently, uh, they're saying right now that the rule of thumb is just to maintain what you have. Which I think is a, you know, a decent goal. I don't think we would have any trouble maintaining that. Why is that important? Well, it's an awful lot like a credit score. So the higher your bond rating, the better credit, your, or better interest rate that you're going to see on, on any kind of bond that is issued. Uh, that would be followed on January twenty-seventh at your regular meeting with a bond authorizing resolution. So at that point, we will have a pretty good idea of what the interest rate is. We will definitely know or at least have a good idea of where standard of pores is going. That would be a critical uh point for the board as to whether we go forward with the refinancing or not. And you would get another set of uh documents that would outline what that cost is. All those numbers will be updated based on what the current interest rate is and based on what our bond rate is. A final uh official statement would be issued on February third. A bond sale would actually occur on February twenty-second. And then the bond closing would be March tenth. So you can see it's a multi-month process uh to accomplish this. Now, why do we qualify for even doing this? Well, this is pretty common. Yet roughly, you know, uh, thirty to halfway through your bond, uh, it's always good to reevaluate what the market is. And whether or not it's uh economical, and clearly this one is, at least in terms of uh uh what our annual savings would be. So the proposal today is to uh ask if you would be willing to have uh next week's agenda resolution proceed process.
I guess I, I don't, I, I looked it over and there's something I guess I'm not understanding. So we currently pay for bound, on council, correct? Or is this a new thirty-five thousand dollar charge that we're gonna?
It would be uh anytime you finance through a bond, you have to have a bond counsel that's advising you. So this is project specific. So this bond counsel would be for the refinancing effort or the rebonding effort. Today, it won't be for anything else, just for this, this effort.
So this is a one-time charge of thirty-five thousand dollars?
Right.
So the next one is that Baker Tilly of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Now, I, I seen what you put, what you had on here about them. Now we currently have, we utilize uh locally a CPA uh firm. They couldn't do this?
No, this is a specialized field. You have to have certain uh qualifications and, and certifications through the state and federal government to be a bond advisor. It's a completely different field.
So, but that twenty-nine thousand, five hundred is annual charge?
Be really a one-time charge for this. So this isn't going to go a year, as you can see.
Oh, I thought I seen that that's an annual. I seen that somewhere.
Well, it's we're only doing one bond. Let's pour this project.
Other questions?
No, I can see you refinance it. I mean, I understand refinancing.
It's going to save us money?
Uh, yeah, it looks like it'll save us almost a year's worth of payments. Uh, does this stay, we stay on the same uh schedule seventeen years? We're not, we're not extending out farther.
It's up to twenty thirty-eight.
Yeah.
That's
Oh, yeah.
But this is no set interest rate, correct?
It isn't before.
We will know what that interest rate is when the, uh, what point would that be? Probably right around the final preliminary official statement will know whatever the bond ratings are, or whatever the interest rates are around that date. They do fluctuate usually fractions of a percent. Uh, you know, they're never
If you refinance your house today, you go in to talk to the bank today about refinancing. You're not going to get today's interest rate. When they get done with the paperwork and going through all your, your appraisals and everything else, that's when, that day they're going to do it.
That's not true. I did it twice in this pandemic. Um, but I, I've never went with that.
They gave you the, the interest rate the day you walked in?
Yeah.
You had a lock-in rate.
I do. Of course they lock in. Um, but I, I, that's what I'm not understanding. So could our, our rate fluctuate from now until two thousand thirty-eight?
Once we're locked in, yeah, on date certain, let's, let's pick that, well, certainly by the bond sale up there for the twenty-second. I don't know exactly where they established this, but certainly by bond sale, we will know what that is. And so anybody bidding on the bond, you know, that's the rate we're looking for. Now somebody hopefully is going to come in and undercut whatever that rate is. And you know, that's, that happens. It depends on how hungry the uh buyers are. So they could come in and actually give us a better rate. And there's, you know, we had one time happened back in oh eight, oh nine. There was about a three-month period where all of these bond sales just stopped. Uh, because they weren't coming in low enough. They just literally froze the market. It stopped. Uh, you know, the average schools was burned by that. They had a big uh expansion project that they had to go out. Restart the process. So it was another six months before they could get their project going. But that's a fluke that uh, something happened once that I can remember in thirty-five years. Uh, so I doubt that'll happen. We could get to that point though, and uh, you know, I have no understanding of how the interest rates work, but let's say they shoot up two percent. We can say, okay, no, or we're done because that might end up actually costing us more uh to refinance at that point.
So then what happens if we say we're done?
Well, yeah, that decision point will be uh February third. That doesn't sound right. Anyway, your regular meeting um right around, well, in the January first part of February, you'll know. That's where we'll have the final numbers from bond advisor uh for moving forward.
If we were to get to that point and, and let's say, no, we can't do it. We're still going to owe though that thirty-five thousand bond counsel. Yes, no.
We're going to owe some of it. Um, this is taking this, this budget that you see in the uh material is taking through the whole process. So if we never get to the end, we don't do a sale, we don't do uh the uh reading hall or something like that, there'll be a prorated amount. We won't know it all. And you know, I can't tell you this is a sure thing, but it's as close as it gets. Really, you're not going to see the, the interest rate spike to a point where this isn't going to work. And I don't really see that in the forecast.
I think we should go, keep going with this. Absolutely.
I agree.
Okay, so we say yes, what do you guys say? Okay, so we say yes. What do you guys say?
I, I, I need to look a little closer at this, but, but you got three yeses, so go ahead and put it on up.
Item four B, DHSS fund transfer request.
I have to admit, I don't understand what's happened in the past on this, but the request itself doesn't seem unreasonable. DHHS had roughly twenty-nine hundred dollars left over in their budget for twenty-one. They're asking the board to allow them to transfer that to their shut-off fund, formerly the critical needs fund. I assume that's like a utility shut-off. There's assistance that's paid and that the board has apparently done this in the past. Clearly, I don't have that history. So that can't be done administratively. That's something that the board would have to authorize. And that's the request that's on the table.
And I see back in these emails, it was more last, bring here to Tracy. So didn't the same thing occur last year?
I don't recall it happening last year. Tracy's here now. She might remember.
And I wasn't part, I, I, my, my year's next month or week. So from what I understand though, yes, they do this at the end of the year. They have to account for everything that, you know, we pay them. They have to give us some sort of budget. This is what money they have not spent. And so they're asking to like more or less keep it in this fund. And Karen had mentioned that they do this every year, so.
We haven't run any problems with, with the auditor doing this, or?
Not to my knowledge.
No, we're not.
We're saying what it told us.
Right. The, the critical thing is that there's some record.
They're not.
Yes, it's okay.
We could use some money.
I did. Your call. I just didn't bring it.
Sounds like they don't need as much budget if they, they don't spend it every year. What the heck, we laying it out there?
I don't know how much typically has gone, but I sit on this board and I wasn't at the last meeting because I was my procedure done. But a lot of what they utilize those funds for are like child seats and things like that. And I know that there, because of COVID, there wasn't a big demand for that stuff. And what they expressed to me in prior meetings was historically, this money has just been rolled over to allow them to take and assist people for emergency shut-off, whether it's gas, electricity. They will provide some funding for, I mean, twenty-nine hundred bucks is not a whole lot of money, frankly, in scheme of things.
So what would you like to do, Commissioner?
Go into a good cause, no matter what.
I'm kind of curious what it's been year after year.
Historically?
Yeah, historically.
But I, I don't know. Their budget's not, your entire budget. It was like forty-nine hundred dollars, I think it is. You know, it's not a huge sum of money to begin with, right? So.
Do you recall how much we do? I don't, I don't recall. That seems long.
I'd be able to look it up really quick. It is not much. That's, that's true.
Like I say, in the grand scheme of things, it's not.
I don't think twenty-nine hundred dollars would do much for us. Mission Rebecca. As far as what you want to do with the money? Department of Human Services, is that it?
Five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It was forty-nine, five.
And they haven't spent twenty-nine hundred dollars or five thousand dollars?
We're getting a lot of money.
So then how about if, if we keep this in mind next year and find out where they're at? You know, while we're, we're negotiating, negotiating the budget, if they haven't spent that next year, then we definitely need to cut that five thousand.
Like you say, if it's going into the community and it's helping people that, you know, you know.
What do you guys want to do? We have to decide, are we putting on a resolution? Are we? We got two yeses, maybe, no?
I don't know why they're not budgeting this, their budget. In their own budget, I don't think they budget two thousand dollars into a shut-off fund. If they do this every year.
Agreed. This has been, you know, this last year and a half, two years, it's been a complex year, though, complex times.
Well, just by reading the letter, it, it says, it sounds like they needed a thing every year.
Let's put it on and we'll decide next week. Anybody can reach out to you with questions, right?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, administrative secretary wage.
Yeah, I looked this morning.
Hundred dollars.
I wonder where we're gonna get that? Geez, if only. So I developed a proposed hourly compensation schedule for the position taken primarily from union contracts that we currently have. So this would fit that same range, not more, not less, but roughly the same. And then that begs the question of, you know, the, the total annual cost. And I've got three different options broken out, twenty-hour a week position, twenty-five-hour a week position, and a thirty-five-hour a week position. And you can see with thirty-five hours being full-time, that that's a significant jump in the total cost of a position. I candidly, I don't have a preference for any of the three. I could certainly make any of the three work without any issue with that regard. So the question then is, is that a fair compensation schedule, that hourly rate that you see above? And then, you know, what type of position, you know, part-time, full-time, would we be looking at? Now, keep in mind that these are annual totals. So the twenty-hour a week annual total at eighteen thousand one sixty. On a best-case scenario, we're looking at somebody in place probably right around the first of January, which means twenty-five percent of the fiscal year is over. So this year would be impacted roughly seventy-five percent of those numbers. So just bear that in mind. It does assume on the benefits that the maximum coverages for family and for pension are just assumed. It could be less, they won't be more than that.
Questions?
Well, you gotta, you gotta ask what caliber person we're gonna get if we're gonna talk twenty hours a week versus a full-time job. We want the best. This is a, this is not just a secretary takes dictations and things like this. This is going to be a very can be a higher, a higher level position. You gotta have somebody that's going to be involved in most intricate parts of our government here. Confidentiality, yeah. Huge confidentiality. What do you, what do you get for twenty hours? Nobody. I, I'm asking you, Jack, because you're the one that outspoken about part-time versus full-time.
Well, we, I agree. We, we met so much resistance coming into Tim's job a year ago. Understandably, after all the cuts and everything that happened, I mean, honestly. Now we got that position up and going, and now bringing it into a, another full-time position. I just want to make sure whatever we do, that this position is sustainable. It's not fair to bring somebody and say, say somebody in her, in her office, in her transfers to this position. Does very well, and after six months, you know, we decide that this, that our budget doesn't allow us to sustain this position. I just would like to do a trial period between January until the end of the, the fiscal year of twenty hours per week. I mean, I don't know if it's fair to say you don't know what you're gonna get at twenty hours a week until we put it out there. And then maybe we can't get a qualified individual and, and I just think taking it back to the public and saying, this is what we're doing, this is why, we're gonna reevaluate this, see if this needs, if the workload is there for a full-time position. Then we move forward.
Okay. I think part of what you're saying, but, you know, when we talked about having an administrator, that was change. That was a huge change.
Correct.
Changes. So, so many people are resistant to change. And in my experience, it was in-house that we got the most resistance, not, not out in the public. And, and my experience. This is a whole package thing. We're, we're so far behind. But we, we found out here in the last year and a half that we're so far behind on everything. I mean, job descriptions, we don't have job descriptions, simple job descriptions. Our unions come to us and say, well, you got agreements. What's this, what's this person's job supposed to be? Well, we can tell you, but we don't have anything in writing. Why not? Everybody else's got it in writing. Why? You should have it in writing. Well, we don't have it, right? Had it writing for, for thirty years. We've had the Department of Treasury here to tell us we rank eighty-third in a, in a state of eighty-three counties that, of, of fund balance. We gotta get, we gotta get high-speed, get back into what we're doing. That's not internet either.
I, I, I agree with you. I, I agree with you. However.
Tim's been overwhelmed with work.
Agreed, but some of that busy work, and I don't think we're utilizing Tim's skills fully because he's doing some secretarial duties. But a lot of his busy work, or let me, let me rephrase that. Some of his busy work just got completed with negotiations. It's now good for three years. That's done and, and over with. So now he can focus on other things. I, I, I'm just really, we'll stand behind the twenty hours a week initially starting to see where this goes. I think we can under, we can explain this better to the public.
I, I we're back to this, okay, then we hire this twenty, twenty-hour a week person, whatever, whoever it is. And we skip the good ones because they wanted thirty-five hours. They wanted a full-time job with Benny. And we're, we're not even looking at them. We're, we're, they're off the table because we're gonna look at a twenty-hour.
But we're making an assumption. We don't know till we try.
They're not even gonna apply, yeah, why? And so, so we get into this, six months into it, find out, oh geez, yeah, we needed this person. Wow, yeah. Hey, thanks a lot for this twenty hours. You don't want to work any more than that? Well, you hit the road and we're gonna start applying for, we're gonna put applications out for thirty-five hour full-time.
So what's worse, six months from now, you take somebody that's part-time to full-time? Or you take somebody from? Or you take somebody that we hired full-time to say, hey, we can no longer sustain this. We're gonna take you to part-time. It could go either way.
Okay, so I hire this twenty-hour, even if they want to bump up. But the thirty-five full, full benefit person didn't even apply because it's only twenty hours. Okay, they didn't even apply. So we didn't even look at it. We didn't even get a chance to talk to them. So then you get into this thing, this twenty-hour person, and they're doing fine. Oh, they like to go to a bump up. Yeah. Do they have the skills that the one we didn't talk to? Probably not.
We don't know.
We don't even know.
But you're making that assumption. And then that could go from also you have this great person at, they're at full-time and we, we can't sustain this job. We have to take them out to part-time. So here goes this great person because they can't.
Well, I'm gonna bet the other way, so.
I understand, but again, I would really hate to cut a position when we can't financially sustain it. We have no idea what's gonna happen in the next year. But where we're at right now.
Well.
Things are not better.
We got a budget. We had a budget and, I mean.
We got ARPA funds for the next four years at least.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we're sitting in pretty good, pretty good shape right now. I mean, for compared to we were even three years ago. I mean, our fund, our, we don't have a fund balance yet, but we're, we're on the road.
We're setting good shape, but we had to use five hundred thousand dollars of that federal fund, so we're, we're not.
You didn't mind giving away twenty-nine hundred because you didn't think it was much.
So we're really not.
Well, and the entire, if you look at, if you look at it the other way, the entire ARPA funds qualify as lost revenue. So we really didn't.
But saying we're setting good without those ARPA funds, we are not.
No, exactly.
So that's not a fair statement.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, but to say that this year we're in bad shape, worse than we were, but like, like Mark just said, it, it just, it just refunded our, our lost, wait, uh, lost revenue. It, it may be a crotch in, in, in your argument, then we're gonna be in worst case in four years. Now, I think we're in a lot better shape. I think the glass is half-full. Okay, I think it's closer to three-quarters full.
And so, so, so what I've been hearing out of my constituents is, okay, when, when Tim was gonna get hired, you know, it's like, where is the money coming from? It got figured out. He's doing a phenomenal job. We all know that. Okay, now you want a secretary. Where's the money coming from?
Right.
Coming out of our performance? Again, that's for four years.
Maybe in the, in the short term, but what, but hiring, hiring Tim, and this is the thing I said right off the bat was, you, you get him in here, he'll find a way to pay for himself. And he's going to do it, but it's just gonna take time because we're so far behind the eight ball that it, it'll just take time. So he's gotta have the, he's gotta have the tools to make that happen. And, and we're so far behind the eight ball that, that it's, it, it's taken hard, it's taken longer. It's taking longer to do, do this. And he's buried in it.
Commissioner Becker.
Well, number one, at twenty hours a week, sixteen bucks an hour, good luck finding anybody that's gonna be qualified for this position. Okay, I can't even find people working in, in my business that, which is in a lot of cases, less responsibility. And we see how our past benefits and pay had resulted in not being able to find anybody to work for the county, whether it be in the courthouse or at the sheriff's department. So if you're gonna do this, and there's obviously a, a high need for it, because there's a ton of work to do, then I say you make a competitive package and you go get someone that's gonna do the job for you. Because if you get somebody that's not very high, highly qualified, then maybe they don't really do much for us. And we waste the eighteen grand or twenty-two grand a year that we, they got into them. If for some reason we can't sustain this position at fifty-two thousand dollars a year, then we're probably in a lot better, or a lot bigger problems at that point. We're probably looking at making a lot more cuts than just one job. And I think that this is very, very critical
Right, but.
to going forward with our county. I mean, and I'm just speculating at this point, but let's say Tim stays for three years. And then he tires or moves on somewhere else if he decides to. If we had somebody in that office and they've been working closely with them, and this is a type of position where they may stay for ten, twenty years, you know, no. We'd have some consistency in that office because you never know what's gonna happen with the board. We could have four new board members next year. I, I just think this.
We'd have five.
Agreed.
Any given.
But no matter where that person is, part-time or full-time, you can still have the consistency. I mean, when we're looking, if we have to look at, to me, fifty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money. I, I mean, it, it's not, but fifty-two thousand dollars of budget is a lot of money. If we have to look at cuts next year or the year after, this would be a position to go versus an officer on the street, keeping, keeping individuals safe. You know, I, again, I, that's my, Tim, what do you, it, it's your office. It's your need.
Well, this is gonna be a secretary that's not just for Tim, but for the entire board.
Agreed, but now I'm gonna ask him what his needs are.
Well, definitely, I can keep a person busy thirty-five hours a week. There's no question. Commissioner Newbaker brings up a good point in terms of consistency. I really dread the day, the Thursday, that I can't be here for some reason. I really dread that day. I don't want you meeting without me here. I need to know what's going on. And so that, that's, that's great pressure, but, you know, if this position. And so that, that's, that's great pressure, but, you know, if this position were, uh, in place. If something did happen, at least you'd have somebody here with a little bit of background to provide some input. Uh, and the same just holds true with just simply getting the meeting materials around. See, I was adding stuff as early as this morning, it shouldn't happen, you should have that stuff a couple of days ahead of time, all of it. And it's just not practical, we're doing okay, they're not complaining, we're doing fine. Uh, but it would be nice to, to, uh, have things like that accomplished ahead of time. There is a ton of clerical-type things that just need to be done, just files to be gathered and things that need to have organization put to them. That you pay me too much to do that. Be frank, you pay me too much to do that. So, yeah, I definitely feel, you know, thirty-five hours can work. Would I take twenty? Absolutely. I would take that too. Uh, but I would point out that the other point that was made at entry level, like sixteen-twenty, good luck finding somebody, but if we do the full-time. Do that calculation hourly, works out to just over twenty-nine an hour. Now, hopefully you're attracting others who are employed somewhere else in the community that maybe would like another opportunity. Uh, this would definitely open up.
I was gonna say, highly doubtful it's gonna be somebody at entry level with zero experience. They could come in with five years' experience at twenty-two-oh-eight, correct?
They could, um, yeah, my. Projecting this thing forward is that we would advertise it at the entry level. And then, or we probably put the range in there. Uh, but typically you've got an entry level for a reason, so if this is too low, then we need to make the adjustment.
But I thought with this new wage scale, their experience, because we've seen some significant raises lately, their experience is, is part of the scale.
Right, we bargained that with some of the, uh, unions and we, we did some things with their scales that really made that, uh, necessary, uh, uh, move. In this case, I don't suggest you need to do that, we would put the, the range out there in the ad, this is what it is. If we get somebody that's, uh, absolutely phenomenal, I'm coming back here saying, we need to bring them back in or bring this person in at a higher rate. You'll have that conversation here. By establishing this and when we get our personnel policy in and we will be working on that here between now and the end of the year. Uh, I intend to put a rule in there that says, okay, maybe you allow a department head to hire in at the one-year level, but if it comes in any higher than that. This board needs to be part of that conversation because then it becomes even more significant. Okay, that's what we do, but we would just plan right now that we're hiring somebody in at that lower end. If a candidate comes in and said, that's not enough, if we really want that candidate, then we start talking.
So if you're, if, if someone applies in our, in our office, in our department, or. Would they come in at their current wage or would they, because I mean, how many are actually at the sixteen-twenty?
Off the top of my head.
I mean, do you see what I'm saying? They would come in.
Well. There's something to negotiate, it's something we can't negotiate.
This is a non-union position.
Yeah, I, I will definitely, uh, I, I would not be comfortable offering a position. Or offering a pay rate at the upper end of that scale without coming back to the board, whether that's an intern or an external candidate. So that conversation we'd have to have if, if we had that candidate come through.
Okay, so do, what do you guys wanna do with this? Do, are you requesting this beyond the next meeting, are you?
Well, I mentioned a timetable, I, best case of having somebody actually in the seat in January, in order to do that, we would need to adopt this, uh, scale or A-scale. Uh, very soon, if not the next meeting, then the one following. Just timing it out.
Where in the budget is this money gonna come from?
Well, that's, that's what I need to bring back as part of the resolution and to make that known, you know, should. Tell you what lines or whatever adjustments that we're gonna make, I'll actually put it right in the resolution.
Thank you.
Yes, make your resolution, definitely. I don't care if money has to come out of contingency.
Item forty, county council review.
Are you gonna, or is the resolution?
Yes, he said yes.
Okay, I just was asking the chair first. Don't give me the eye.
It's better than something else I could give you.
Um, the last meeting, the whole meeting, there was the question about, uh, just exactly how we spent our money on county council, and I put together some. Uh, simple pie charts that I think really do draw the picture out well for us. Uh, the first one is the total legal hours and cost, uh, for all hours billed. Uh, I did wanna break out this Fox versus Ogumah case that our council is working on. That's somewhat unique of a, a situation, it's been going on now for, gosh, I wanna say three years. Uh, this is the case where there's now a class action across the state on, uh, sale of properties at tax sales and where should those proceeds go? And all counties are facing an expense for that right now, we just happen to have our corporation council representing us, along with the, uh, other councils across the state. And of all the hours billed, eighteen percent of the hours went to that case for the total cost. Forty-two percent of the total cost, legal cost, were on that one case. So, um, having said that, now I wanna, uh, focus more on the, the corporate council duties itself, which is on the second page. And as far as the total hours you're billed, and again, these are very general, uh, uh, categories, if you get into the invoices, they specifically tell you what case or what. Project they were working on, how many hours, uh, and that does tend to, uh, fall under attorney-client as well because there's often some description in there that, uh. Gets into what they're doing on a specific case. So, four general categories. Research and review, uh, was eighty-five percent of the hours that were spent. And I'll come back to that in a second, uh, meetings, five percent of the hours, now meetings would also include, uh, meetings not just with the board, but with others. So if they were meeting with a department head, that would go in here. Our council currently doesn't charge for meetings with the board, so if it's a board meeting, that's a no charge, but if it's an individual meeting with a department head, that's a different matter. Uh, that, that's billed hourly. Document preparation was seven percent of the time and correspondence, that's emails, that's, uh, uh. Conferences, you know, quotes, phone calls, uh, were, were three percent of the total hours billed, now on the total cost. You can see while research and review was eighty-five percent of the time spent, it was only sixty-seven percent of the dollars. Why don't you just put an asterisk next to this, um, in the council, their office did provide us with a list of. Activities that were performed during the internal investigation and remember we recorded a flat, four-eight of fifteen-hundred dollars for this and that's all they charged. Had they charged the regular hourly rate, it would have been just shy of twenty thousand, so this is a bit deceiving, you know, eighty-five percent of the time, but only sixty-seven percent of the cost. That cost percentage would be quite a bit greater had we not gotten that flat rate for that one project. Document preparation, twenty percent of the cost, but this gets into, and reviewing, uh, and we had some, uh, a couple of, uh. Situations developed over at the correctional facility about. Yeah, mail policy and, and, and the rights of inmates to get certain articles of mail and so forth, and that took time. Uh, so it takes some, some, not only, uh, preparing documents, in that case policies, but the research time that went into it. And that's not uncommon that you, um, as far as preparing those documents, that you would see a, a cost at twenty percent like that, because there are a lot of, uh. Back and forth, making sure that their document is consistent with, uh, the latest, uh, court rulings and so on. Uh, those correspondence were nine percent of the cost, as you could see, so that's, you know, all the letters that were written on our behalf and. Uh, responses to, uh, other attorneys and so on. So that's the breakdown, uh, of where, uh, where our costs have gone. And that led to then, uh, question, uh, we. When we hired Foley Mansfield said, uh, that we wanted to review this after about a year, just to see where we are and, uh, discuss whether or not we want to. Again, search the horizon to see what other options are out there. And so that's the point where we are right now, actually, probably about a month or two late on our one-year goal, but nevertheless, uh, we got a pretty good idea. Of what an annual cost is looking like and what that breakdown looks like. If you are interested in, um, considering other options, I would suggest rather than issuing the RFP. Going through that process, we did get four, uh, very good responses the last time. I would suggest maybe foregoing the, the actual resending of the RFPs and probably getting those same four firms to respond. That instead, um, that we would invite them in to talk to you directly about what they offer and how they would approach Ogumah County, if you're interested in doing that.
Didn't we, when, uh, Foley Mansfield, when we decided to go with them, didn't they present us with two different options, an hourly rate and an annual cost?
They did.
Do you remember what the annual cost? Did we exceed this twenty?
Their annual, if I recall, was, was, or the, uh, retainer, if you will, I wanna say it was twenty-five thousand and you can see our total cost, not including that Fox case. We're twenty-three-one-seventy-nine, but we're one month short of a full fiscal year in, in this presentation, so this takes us through August thirty-first. Do expect to see the September invoices literally anytime now. So that's, you know, just keep that in mind, it's just short of a full year.
Well, the fifteen-hundred-dollar deal was pulled when it bought the team.
Right, yeah, well, you know. That would have been because it was a very specific, wasn't a corporation council-type activity, it was. Go forward to do this special project.
So the hourly rate was pretty close to what his retainer fee was.
Right.
Estimated to be.
Right.
By looking at this, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's close.
Do you, I mean, you, you obviously have quite a bit of experience in this, does that cost twenty-three thousand dollars, does that look substantial to you, does that look?
Yeah, but, you know, the, the oddity is the Fox case, uh, as far as the regular corporation council work goes, yeah, we've had some unique things happen over the year. But that's kinda common, you don't know what you're gonna get hit with, you know, from, uh, uh, year to year. And bear in mind that is, you know, we see other bills for council in here, but these are bills that are through the insurance assigned council. So we have, for instance, the minor case dealing with that culvert, uh, that's, that's a different. Pot, if you will, or a different line in the general fund, so not to confuse the two. This is just the work that we generated at this table. And no, it's not on, I, I think it's reasonable.
We haven't got any updates on that Fox case recently.
Hasn't been a lot of movement on it, there are, uh. Arguments going back and forth now, uh, as to whether or not this case could be made retroactive or proactive. And if it is retroactive, how far back do we go, uh, all those things are being ironed out.
We, that goes retro. That's huge.
Unfortunately, not going to have as big an impact on Ogumah counties as we'll say, uh, you know, Cleveland County, for instance, where they've got a lot more activity.
So do we wanna put out RFPs and see what we get?
No, I think, I think, like, his idea is skip the RFPs, we already got four. Four candidates, so it's, they're, they're, ask them to, like, but we should have each one of them come here and let them ask them.
We have to reach back out to them to see if they're even still interested.
Right, that's just, depending on where this discussion goes, that would be, what I would do is call them directly and say, are you interested in earth's potatoes?
I would like to see that, yeah, I think it would make sense.
So are any of them local, or, or, what's, do you recall them for?
Lansing. One was in, two were in Lansing, one was in Grand Rapids, and then Foley Mansfield is in the Detroit area, I forget which suburb it is.
Oh, both same.
Okay, do you guys agree?
I don't have a problem with putting it out for bid as well, but. Obviously, I'd like to invite the four we have.
So I guess, so I totally understand not using the RFP, not utilizing that, we don't, we're not putting it out to bid again to see if there's any other. People that are interested, we're just going back to the four people that, that put in a year ago to say, hey, are you still interested?
Right, that, that's, that's what I would suggest. I just, I don't believe you're gonna get more response than what you have. The others weren't interested, I don't think they're interested today.
What do you think? You, you wanna put it out, you wanna put it out for bid?
Well, if.
Do you think the law?
I guess what are, what are?
Firm's gonna?
What are we out, so if we put it out for bid and these four people, hang on, if these four people don't, are not interested. They're not gonna be interested whether we put it out to bid or not, and what's gonna change their mind if we just call them and say, hey, do you wanna come? And they say no, what does it matter if it's also put out to bid?
I think what changes the mind is that there is an awful lot of effort that goes into responding to an RFP.
There is?
Oh, yeah, we're asking, we had a slate of about twenty-five questions that we wanted answered. Uh, which I'm sure with these four, any of those answers would change very much, but there, there is effort on their part within their firm and therefore cost to reply to that RFP. And. It becomes a hassle, gosh, you're gonna put this up to bid again whilst you don't wanna. Go through this again, or they're too busy, or, you know, who knows?
Well, we could narrow the question like, like Jenny, it just say, hey, you wanna come and just talk to us and don't, don't answer any questions.
They're still gonna, they're still gonna have to give us a cost because their costs could have changed from last year to this year, so essentially it is still going up.
I would, yeah, I would ask them to update those tables, whatever they sent us, if their costs change at all. Uh, and again, I think those questions will, will be the same, or, or answers will be the same to those questions, so I can certainly get that back to you. In advance of interviewing a firm that comes in here, so if you had other follow-up questions you had, you have some, some base to work from. But it would, uh, first of all, expedite the process for us, it would mean, you know, thirty to forty-five days that we don't, we're not sitting waiting. And for the firm, the effort of actually having to reply is eliminated. Just my thought.
I would like a firm that doesn't have any ties or any, any past with, with any, any departments, any. A, a brand-new firm with no, no relationships or no connections.
Well, in, in, in that respect, then, three out of those four that replied last time would fit your. With your criteria.
I don't recall, but I'm, I'm hoping.
Foley Mansfield was the only one of the four that we had dealt with before.
I don't remember, but I'm, you're probably right. Do you want me to repeat that?
Quote that in your notes.
It's on video, and that's good for a few years, I'll bring that up.
I'm sure.
There's no ringtone on your phone, you're probably right.
Thought you were wrong once, but you were wrong.
Still on. ARPA discussion.
And the RFP, I've updated the list that you saw from last time, uh, a few of you have gotten with me about some other projects and just keep those coming as they. You know, we just wanna keep a, a running tally of these. Before I get into that any further, I wanna jump over to the next page, that resolution is support for the Michigan Prosperity Roadmap Plan. This resolution is being, uh, encouraged by Michigan Association of Counties, who was, um, a participant in this group. That was, uh, helping set priorities for the state ARPA dollars. And with the discussion that we had earlier, uh, with broadband. We are really gonna need to tap into some of those resources as well if we're gonna really have an impact in Ogumah County, and you heard some of the cost per mile there. Pretty large, and if we wanna do anything else with the county funds. It would be important to team up with, with the state. This doesn't get a foot in the door for any funding or give us any special advantage, but it does make a statement that this county recognizes that the state also has funds out there. And that we would work to, probably leverage some of our money and maybe with the, uh, townships and the cities, maybe leverage some of their money. Or a project that is a priority for the state and that hopefully would move us up on the list for grant award, uh, with, with those funds. Broadband is a huge one with the state, is, is, uh, things we don't get involved with, uh, water and sewer, uh, it's pretty large as well.
I read, I'm sorry, I read through all that, huge with water infrastructure, what am I, what am I missing there, what, what?
Blood pipes.
Well, I know, but that's.
Make sure to, well, broadband doesn't get.
No, it's, um.
Harbor, and most of the large cities, those, that, that infrastructure, a hundred years old, it's pretty common now.
Yeah, there's light pipes in the city of West Branch here.
Yeah, I think West Branch would be wise to check into some of this, to see.
Oh, they have, I'm sure, have, they, Mr. Mayor, slash, I understand.
Between that and the arsenic.
Right, well, that's your proposal was taking, get the new treatment.
You know, they're drinking our water now up there in Ogumah Township, we got perfect water.
We are. Figure pipe coming, so, but yeah, that's, that's where it is, water and sewer are both huge. Yeah, I know, the next big crisis, if you will, with infrastructure, would not be surprised if it's, uh, sanitary sewer systems failing. For the same reason, just outdated material or dated, uh, infrastructure that just needs to be upgraded.
Yeah, that, uh, my village there in Prescott, they have a heck of a time with their sewage plant over there, it's, it's awful.
Uh, jeez, it just stinks.
It's awful. It's awful. It's outdated. It's one thing after another over there, but anyways, I So this this
Yeah, I don't have props to support that.
What what would be the downfall to not supporting this?
I I don't want to suggest this would ever happen, but you know, if one more county supports it, maybe something goes, you know. I don't know how many counties have signed on already, I know, but a few at least. Uh but you know, if we're unanimous among all of our counties telling the state we think this is a good plan, I I would hope that has some influence on how they approach it.
But we're already getting the monies.
We got our monies. This is money the state has now, completely independent of anything we have.
Oh, okay.
This is additional money that we would hope to leverage.
That we're hoping to get to fix our lead pipes.
It's been going in cases, all the townships sign a resolution to us to get our money.
Say that again?
Well, it'd be just like the townships having a resolution each township to try to capture some of the money that we get.
I suspect the Michigan Townships Association has something very similar circulating among the townships. I'm sure the MML has the same thing, but the cities, that everybody would everybody's on board with this. I think, again, we have a better chance of actually getting ones versus just along
This is not committing us to anything.
No.
Okay, I just want to, okay.
Just a
Okay, are we done with that?
I am.
Um, item four, KCC millage. Is there any update on that?
I unfortunately did not shoot a message to Greg to remind him of the meeting. I don't have an update of it.
So I do, I think. I had a constituent, a very intelligent constituent, come to have a discussion with me related to, it's called a uh I'm going to say this one, referendum.
Referendum?
Yeah, just give me a second. referendum. Now, I did a little research on that, just a little. I was hoping Greg would be on the call today. And I'm I'm wondering with this, because all the research that I that I've done on it, it looks like it it's related to laws. But I'm wondering with what what you do here is is you pass out, are you go around and get signatures? And you'll have to get a, I'm not a hundred percent sure on what percentage of signatures we're looking at. But Mistress Commissioner Scott brought up at the one of these meetings as far as bringing these millages back on the ballot to let the individuals of Oglema County make a decision if they want to go forward with these villages. With this referendum, it seems like we could either do one of two things. We could either leave the leave the core area because since Kirtland has left Roscommon or getting the village back on the ballot for the entire core area. There has to be a way that we can do something with getting enough signatures to put this back on the ballot for voters to go forward. The problem is, is this would include Ascoda, Roscommon, Oglema, Crawford County. Does any of this make any sense?
Yeah, it knows, yes.
I I don't
That's enough that you can use.
With, so why hasn't it been used? It seems like there's been so much research on this and and I don't, Pauline, are you on the call? I don't know what she's typically on there. I I I'm wondering why this hasn't been done because but it looked like there, in order to this, it looks like there's a time period. But if this is done correctly, I mean, there's obviously enough time to get this on the next election. Can we get more information on this? Is this is this? I'm sure that it could be easily, signatures, enough signatures could be obtained to go forward with this, if this is a legal way of doing this.
I
As far as I know, you would be petitioning the state legislature.
Well, I think that's one way, but I think the other way is, I think there's two ways of that. And again, I'm I'm just digging into this. And don't ask me why, because I have enough going on.
That's what I've been told by the rep and by, we've been told by me and that this is a state, this is a statutory
I don't
Law, law.
Right, you could take this to get rid of that law, which is not what I would want to do. I mean, I think that that's way above where I would want to go. I would want to just pull us out of that area. I think there's different ways to go about this. I don't think we want to eliminate that state law. I think that's way, I I think that's a little deep, but I think as far as pulling Oglema County out of this area, there's got to be a way to do this to get enough signatures, to validate those signatures, to move forward with getting this on a ballot next year. Who do we ask?
I'm sorry, I have to go with the council on that.
Yeah.
Unless we know of an election expert, which maybe the clerk's office knows of somebody who could do that.
Come on, Tracy.
I could
I mean, you see
I could help us all with that at a county clerk, there's county clerk association. There's a means find that out, but probably the probably uh the reason, I'm just guessing, the reason why we're not uh we haven't seen petitions is because it's the lack of volunteers that do it.
Well, we have a volunteer that's been here every single
Yeah, I get one person.
Well, has she been given correct legal counsel? You know, that's quite costly. Um I mean, this affects a lot of constituents in Oglema County. I think that this could be done. But again, with the top way that I I discussed, I think you have to get, my question would be is if you have to get so many voters in each county, which would be Ascoda, Roscommon, Oglema, Crawford may struggle a little bit in Crawford because that's where it sits now. But if we could combine all of that and just get so many voters, I mean, obviously, I don't think you're going to struggle with Oglema or Roscommon. Roscommon is just as angry as we are. And Ascoda, I don't know how many voters are there, but if we had to get so much percentage in each county, or we could just get a total
Okay, so
Of all four counties.
Just just as a point of discussion, I mean, so so uh uh so then a petition could work, say.
I hope so.
Hypothetically, a
Yes.
Who's who's going to run this thing? Are we going to pay out money to hire somebody?
Well, no, Pauline's
Or hire a company to take care of that, to do this?
I don't think that that's needed.
It is a, there, most all petitions have a time uh period. Isn't that true, Tim?
Right.
Once you start a petition, you got it, you got it, you can only go so long.
Correct.
It's not continuous that you can get signatures for the next five years. And so you got to go off canvas and you got to go out and and drive around and spend money to get this stuff done.
Yes, possibly, but also when when some other recalls
We can, I don't think that we can compensate people to do that either.
That's not what I'm saying. We have an individual that's been at numerous meetings that has obviously put a lot of effort, and Brenda Simmons is the other one, put a lot of effort into this to see if they're willing to take this to the next step, if we connect them with the right steps to do this. I think you're wrong. I think people are going to come. If you say sign this petition, we're going to be a a parking lot at this day, this time. I think you're going to have people lining up, just like with all of the petitions that you've seen in the last year. Um, I've seen a few. So recalls, whatever you want to call them, whatever. I I I don't think we know till we try. Obviously, what we've tried in the past, recent past, hasn't worked.
Okay, well, the, maybe it's not compensating people wage-wise, but I don't think as as a county board that we're, we're going to be able to take a side as far as paying for the the paperwork for petitions or anything like that.
I I that's not what I was, I I was going to now put this back on. If this is something that we need to first find out if this, if we're able to do this. If we are, then we need to put this back on those individuals. I don't have time to do this. But this was something that was brought to me. I've done a little bit of research, just started researching it. And and this affects a lot of people, um a lot of constituents that are voicing concerns that that are upset over what's happened with us in the past year related to KCC.
All right, well, if we're if we're going to ask me and to give us some kind of thing, I guess we better ask them, does somebody need to form, a civilian need to form a pack of political action committee? Something like that, that takes on costs, because there's cost of doing this.
Agreed, agreed, hundred percent.
I don't think the county can do this. I think we can research the the information, and that's all we could do.
That's all information we need to find out. But again, there's been numerous people that have been here in others out that are, I think, are going to be more than willing if they have the correct guidance to do this. If they're going to do it, it's going to be correct.
Well, yeah, they're going to do it, and we have to stay correct. It's just like a million, we can't advertise as a public body, we can't advertise for a minute. We can provide information about it, but that's it.
Well, my question is, say there's seventy five, say seventy-five percent of the people in these four counties sign this. Okay, and we put it on a ballot, be voted on, it's voted on. At that point, the state has their statutes. We just voted and said, we're not paying no more. So what happens? We quit paying it?
I'd very much excuse me, I need to depart to the building.
Um, I I I guess that's all information that we're going to find out. We we've acted out at that point in time.
Great.
So again, I think that there is a way to do this, if we get enough signatures.
I hope so.
Back on, now maybe it goes back on the ballot and it goes through again. Great, but then the residents have voted with the current situation, which is where it's at.
Oh, I agree.
I don't know. Forward to that email.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
I don't know what question I'm asking.
Okay, we have next, Mark, what's, I'm sorry.
Mark just forward that over.
Okay, I've got to go too soon. ORV ordinance update.
No, I don't want to.
Okay, that was quick. Appointed board and commissioner appointments.
Where are we at? I mean
I'm going to forward this to Tim and he's
No, 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 ORV ordinance, we're
Oh.
I had hoped yesterday to get that material off the townships, did not happen. I'm hoping to get that done today. I I want to get it done this week, get it off my desk.
Can you send a copy of what you're going to send them to us?
Yeah.
Because I haven't seen it. Okay.
On the appointed boards and committees, you have a list of expired terms or expiring terms in the material. And this is just a heads up, this is the time of year to do it. So if you want to fill these vacancies, uh hopefully by the first of the year, because most of them expire on December thirty-first. A lot of these are positions that maybe the incumbent wants to be reappointed and that make it very easy for you. Others, you have vacancies or you have a couple of cases, we have members serving on committees or boards that their terms expired maybe a year or two ago. So we're going to need to clarify where all those stand. We've caught up with a lot of them, but you like the last swoop and then we'll finally be on a regular schedule for reappointments. So just an information item for you, we can put something on our webpage about vacancies. Uh we could certainly let each of these boards and commissions or the members know and then find out if they want to be reappointed. And then if necessary, we could even put a tag in the Herald asking for interested people to apply.
I think that's perfect. So you don't need anything from us. This was just information, correct?
Information, and this is coming by your second meeting in December. You'll have wanted to fill all these vacancies. If you feel like going out, do a little recruiting, that would, that would be okay.
So Commissioner Scott, your your term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one?
That's, it's my term as commissioner expires that too.
No, that's
I'm a statutory member on that board.
Your term as commissioner is another year yet after that.
Right.
What you do at your annual organization
Twenty twenty-two.
It is twenty.
What you do at your annual organization meeting in January is do appointments for the for the commissioners. So if Commissioner Scott wanted to be reappointed, you felt like reappointed for another year.
Commissioner will sit on that board.
Did we find anything out on the NEMCA board? For the commissioners, you were going to find
They're having a meeting tomorrow here in West Branch. They sent me an invitation.
And that is a commissioner seat, yes.
Okay, so there does have to be a commissioner. I didn't hear back on that.
Yeah.
Because there are residents from Oglema County that serve on that board.
There are. Uh this is a very specific seat assigned to a commissioner, but we do have other reps.
Okay.
It's a big board.
Where in West Branch?
Board.
Oh, nice. Okay, anything else? And then I added the Economic Outlook Breakfast is scheduled for, I I should have announced this at the meeting last week, and I apologize, I did not. It's scheduled for uh November tenth at seven thirty. Um there's going to be three speakers. There's going to be Tracy Simone from Myers, Justin Benjamin, Justin Benjamin from Finnish Concrete and Ray Stover from Michigan. Um just talked to Sue this morning. It's been scheduled at a couple of different locations because things have changed a touch. It starts at seven thirty.
People have something there to eat, I'm sure, if I have to bake it for the night before, I will.
I will as well. Just call me because I took the morning off.
Okay.
Um so we're not sure right now. It's scheduled for Gray Road.
We're going to just go ahead and and it's scheduled for
Pardon me?
Oglema Township.
Yeah, on Gray Road, correct. Okay. So if you guys are able to to attend, um Ray Stover is an excellent speaker, very knowledgeable man. He serves on our EDC board. I'm sure will be full of knowledge of Justin Benjamin. Most of us know him. And Tracy, I'm not familiar with, but she's a speaker for Myers, so.
Yeah, and we're going to um, we've already had contact with people that was in the county that would like to sell two layer. Um, one sushi guy and somebody else wants to, you know, we'd like to get as much local talent involved at stores as possible. So this is going to be the time to connect those things.
And then Michigan is also partnering, Ray, let us know with Myers to put a like urgent care hospital clinic in uh with Myers, but anyways, anything else on that, Sue?
Well, then in, it's going to be two as well. We're going to encourage ECS, um, there's some priorities. One, first one is uh fiber optic, and we put that high on the list. And then childcare is a big thing, big issue in this county because there's just not enough of it. And with new businesses coming in, they need childcare and hospitals don't need somebody nine to five that's out their shift. So we're looking at, you know, bigger bigger things. So we would like to look at partnering with the townships and the county on the ARPA money to get it funded so that we can get better coverage if you bank for a box, because if you let a job out here and a job out there, it's done, you're not going to get competitive prices. They're all in one package, you're going to get a better deal, and your bucks will go farther. So that's what we're hoping for with ECS. And I think I did get talk to Tim about it, and a lot of the counties are doing this, and it's a good idea. So we're like, you're good as well.
They are requesting RSVP, so you can get online for the Economic Outlook Breakfast there and RSVP through uh social media. Thank you, Sue. Item five, public comments. This is the final public comment. Again, please, three, three minutes. Is there any public comment in the uh in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Yes, this is Jeff from the Veterans Office.
Hi, Jeff.
Hello, good morning. Um, I I just wanted to bring up that that the boards and committee chart. Um, Mark, our actual uh expiration is actually April thirtieth of the year. And Mark was reinstated because it fell during uh COVID, when we were basically out of office. Uh but Mark was reinstated. The next one coming up is actually Larry Voice, our World War Two rep in uh twenty-two.
World War Two rep?
He's Vietnam.
Who was that?
Larry Voice, he's just Vietnam.
Did you hear that?
I know Larry Voice was Vietnam, but he's a World War Two rep on our on our meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Vietnam. Uh Don Card is not designated, and Mike Thorne is Korea.
Jeff, I'll call you. You know, that's
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn at eleven oh nine. All in favor, say yes. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have for you to sign.
Oh, that. How did, yeah, I printed that off. It was